May 12th, 2015, Board of Supervisors meeting to order. And welcome everyone here. Glad to see a good crowd out tonight. We have Gary Coe, Pastor, to do the infotication. I asked him to come up and everybody stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for the evening that we gather together here tonight and as we come before our supervisors and those that are elected into this position of high honor. That as they are here for the business of this county, that you will just bless them with their minds that are filled with your wisdom to do your work with, for the citizens that are present, that as they are here to voice their opinions, and that everything be done in order and will. First Thessalonians says, "Non render unto each other in any way any evil for evil; but always follow after that which is good, and one toward another, that that is good toward all." And Father, we ask these things today upon this beautiful day, one more day to worship you in, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Pastor Coe. Again, welcome. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We'll have a few things to go through before we get into the public hearing. First item on our agenda is it's citizens' time. And I'll have Vice Chairman Hall recall the names for citizens' time.
Okay, I think we have three citizens that aren't here to speak about the budget or the tax levy. So the first is Zoe Lowe.
Welcome, Ms. Lowe.
Good evening. My name is Zoe Bell Lowe. I live in 226 Foxfire Road, Max Meadows, Virginia. I'm an eighth grader at Fort Chiswell Middle School. Last June, at the beautiful Jefferson Center Auditorium in Roanoke, Virginia, I was thrilled and honored to be chosen as Miss Virginia Junior High School America 2015, out of an amazing group of middle school girls from all over the state. This year has been incredibly rewarding and busy, as I have traveled all across the state of Virginia, making over forty appearances and doing community service with the national anti-bullying platform, BRAVE, building respect and values for everyone. I have gone to many elementary schools to read anti-bullying books to children about how to handle bullies and what to do if they're ever in that situation. I am planning a father-daughter princess dance in With County on Father's Day weekend to raise awareness and to raise funds to provide all With County public and school libraries with age-appropriate anti-bullying-approved books. My personal platform and community service project is Help Save the Next Girl, an organization that started at UVA after the tragic loss of Morgan Harrington. Help Save the Next Girl, primary focus is to spread safety information and prevent future crimes against young women. This can be accomplished through maintaining vigilance and personal awareness. As a community, we must know our neighbors, be responsible for one another, and cherish precious family. I am working to start a chapter of Help Save the Next Girl at Fort Chiswell High School and hope that the other county high schools will follow suit and start chapters. I am planning a rally in Withville in September to promote personal safety due to children, ID fingerprinting, and have activities to involve and inform students and help girls learn safety practices that will help them lifelong. I am asking the Board of Supervisors support as I pursue organizing the father-daughter dance for the anti-bullying supplies, and also as I try to spread the message of Help Save the Next Girl throughout With County and across the state of Virginia. I also ask your support and prayers as I travel this summer to Orlando, Florida, to compete with 52 other state title holders for the title of Junior High School America, which I could take my messages across the country. I have completed over 500 hours of community service during this year, and with this national title, I could continue my work and my goals could be set even higher. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the cause that you took up on this. It's a very important subject.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Meyer.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm looking at your agenda, and I do not see on here anything about a resolution to support the Trail Advocates Coalition. They were here at the last meeting with the full service, and I was wondering if that is going to be forthcoming from you.
We're still considering it.
How long will it take?
Can't give you that answer, but we're still considering it.
Well, we currently have over 1,000 people that have signed up as members of our Trail Coalition, and actually, it's in my car. I have petitions signed by 2,950 people. So we do have a great deal of interest in the subject, and it's a big necessity. Here is some other information. This came through from the Farm Bureau yesterday about closing elk hunting. Oops, here. So this is another resolution you guys need to look at because it certainly will affect the farm. Did you just say one? Okay. Oh, Mr. Dalton, do you want one?
Thank you.
This needs to be done. We need to respond by the 22nd. This came yesterday from Farm Bureau. Unfortunately, it was advertised maybe in the Roanoke Times or somewhere that we don't know about. But certainly, limiting elk hunting in 32 counties is not a good deal. These are very, very large animals. It could be very destructive for farmers, wildlife, and so on and so forth. So we need to get on with that. And I'd appreciate it if you'd either contact the inland fisheries as soon as possible, definitely by the 22nd, so we can protect the citizens of With County and hopefully southwest Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
And we have one more speaker for citizens' time, Gerald Spraker.
Mr. Supervisor, Board Directors, thank you very much for this time. I'm here to talk about the same thing that she just brought up about the, what the game in the fisheries are trying to do with elk reinduction in 31 counties west of Blue Ridge. You have, there is a law states that you have to vote for reintroduction of elk in your county, and basically you've said, "We do not want that." I'd like to go over just briefly a document that we're sending out to some of our members at the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries that's currently taking comments April 8th to May 22nd concerning elk. At its meeting on March 17th, DGIF Board proposed to close the elk season in all counties west of the Blue Ridge. This management area will affect 31 counties in Virginia, including With County. In this proposal, DGIF is saying they're not introducing or reintroducing elk in these counties, but are managing the species. This particular language allows them to sidestep local governments and negates DGIF's need to get permission of the county governing body before closing the hunting season. With County ranks in the top 10 categories for livestock species and production in Virginia, while also ranking the top 10 of forages, hay, and corn silage. With County currently is one of the top 500 counties nationally in beef production. The inability to control elk population in With County would be catastrophic. Not only do elk carry boncholosis and chronic wasting disease, but their size and foraging needs would pose risk to available feedstuffs and cause major loss to fence and structure home farms. Additionally, with two of the nation's major road systems crossing With County, the addition of elk as a road hazard would create significant property damage, could congest roadways, and potentially result in loss of life. The inability to regulate the population, the inability to reimburse stockmen for their losses, and the inability to reimburse residents for property damage, and the inability to allow local government to dictate its population's opinion make this one of the worst proposals in history for Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. Let's see this plan for what it is. It's a backdoor reinduction of a non-resident species that has a major economic implications for our livestock industry, homeowners, and travelers throughout the Blue Ridge. Farm Bureau has put together a prepared statement that the counties could use. You can choose to. I'd like to hand this out, and I'd like to go over, just take a moment.
Yeah, I think I do. I got cold. Sorry, paper's sticking good.
With County could use this document if they choose. I'd be glad to email it. I'd like to go over it real quick to say, basically, put With County in the blanks. Resolution of With County Board of Supervisors adopted just date 2015, that whereas the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries has proposed to amend a regulation found in For VAC 15-90-85, game deer elk hunting, and whereas, under present regulation, either elk of either sex, antlered or analyst, may be taken during any open deer season using weapons legal for deer hunting in that season, except in the counties of Buchanan, Degerson, and Wise. Whereas, the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries proposes to amend if aforesaid regulation by establishing a continuous closed season of elk hunting, and I won't read all the counties, but there's 31, whereas west of the Blue Ridge. Whereas prohibiting the harvest of elk and the reinduction of species in aforesaid counties and regions, and whereas state law prohibits the reinduction of the species that threaten agriculture without consultation and authorization to local government, and whereas agriculture and our citizens will bear the cost of the lack of hunting elk through crop damage, property damage, potential closed markets due to disease, and whereas the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries has solicited comments upon the proposed regulation for 16-day period beginning April 8th and ending May 22nd. Whereas With County Board of Supervisors has been requested to adopt the following resolution concerning establishment of elk population in With County. Now, worth for be it hereby resolved that With County Board of Supervisors is opposed to the amendment For VAC 15-90-85, game deer elk hunting, and it may be further hereby resolved in order that the copy of this resolution be transmitted to the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries prior to the expiration date for comment and proposed regulation, that With County's opposition to this amendment or enforcing the regulation be noted and spread upon the records of the date, this date, 2015 meeting at the With County Board of Supervisors. At this time, I would like to request that we could vote to oppose this.
We'll look at this, and we'll get some more information on it, Mr. Spraker, and we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Excuse me, gentlemen, you don't have time. The deadline is the 22nd.
22nd, yes.
Which is Thursday or Friday. You don't have time.
We are recessing to Thursday, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I was going to say. We can bring it up Thursday.
Okay.
Because we need to look at and have the Turk County Attorney look at the wording.
And if you'd like, I can get a copy of this. If you choose to use something like this, I can get a copy to you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, has the department given any kind of indication of how the 75 originally introduced elk have multiplied? I mean, do they have any kind of count on what it is in southwest Virginia now?
No, there are three counties, Buchanan, Degerson, and Wise. They voted for this. And we had the ability to harvest elk. To answer your question, I do not, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
But they're trying to backdoor this thing, to let elk come into With County and the other 30 counties west of the Blue Ridge. Any other questions?
Jerry, do you know, unless I'm mistaken, there was elk killed in Bland County last year?
I think there were, yes.
So, I mean, they are coming this way.
And what they're doing is basically saying, I don't know, that they think we're too stupid to understand what they're doing. It's just, it doesn't make any sense. All they're doing is bypassing the law, by changing this law to be able to harvest elk during deer season.
Well, I do know the problems they called in Bland County years ago when it was introduced over there.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you so much for your time.
I know there's some people come in late, that they carry diseases. Is anybody else that'd like to speak during citizens' time? Here and now, I'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting for April 28, 2015. A motion to approve. I have a second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the April 28 meeting. Is any corrections or changes that need to be made to the minutes? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Halsman.
Aye.
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 The Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices.
I'd make a motion that we pay the invoices as presented.
I have a second.
Aye.
Have a motion and a second to pay the invoices. Is any invoice that any board member would like to discuss? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hawley?
Aye.
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 The Chair votes aye. Okay, now we'll go into the public hearing, and I'll read the notice. Pursuant to notice of public hearing, propose With County budget for fiscal year 2015-2016, proposed tax levy for calendar year 2015 with County Virginia. Pursuant to Section 15.2-2506 of Dakota, Virginia, an amendment thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to give the citizens of With County the opportunity to comment on the proposed county budget, which includes the school board budget for fiscal year 2015-2016 and tax levy for calendar year 2015. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 12, 2015, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffel, Virginia, at 7:00 PM. A budget synopsis is prepared and published for information and fiscal planning purposes only. The inclusion in the budget of any item or items does not constitute or obligation, an obligation on the part of the Board of Supervisor of With County to appropriate any fund for that item or purpose. There is no allegation or designation of any fund of the county for any purpose until there has been an appropriation for that purpose by the With County Board of Supervisors. Budget has been prepared on the basis of the estimates and requests submitted to the Board of Supervisors by constitutional offers, intergovernmental agencies, and nongovernmental agencies, and department heads of With County, and reviewed and amended to those requests by the Board of Supervisors and staff. The public hearing proposed school board budget for fiscal year 2015-2016 pursuant to Section 15.2-2506 of Dakota, Virginia, 1950, and amendment thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing. The public hearing will be heard on Tuesday, May 12, 2015, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffel, Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing is to give the citizens of With County the opportunity to comment on the proposed With County school board budget for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. This is for the budget only, as far as public comment. I'll let Mr. Hall go over the time restrictions and rules at this time.
Okay. We'll call your name, and are you going to do, you're going to have a sound. All right, once we have presentation by the county administrator and superintendent of schools, we'll call your name if you've signed up. If you're representing yourself, you have three minutes. I'll have a three-minute and then one-minute and 30-second as you speak. If you're representing an organization, please let us know that you're representing an organization and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Mr. Dalton.
Mr. Chairman. I've been told I have to turn this on. Every year, the board starts the budgetary process somewhere in December and January. This year, as usual, we started, the Board of Supervisors, as part of that planning process, set a couple of goals for the county. One is to take, since raises, employees have been almost nonexistent for a couple of years, to look at raises for the employees, for the school board system, PSA, library, and other people. The second thing, issue that was pressing was healthcare, those every escalating costs. This year, we had a premium increase of over 8%. In the past, we had passed some of that along to the employees. What we wanted to do this year is get everybody in the county on an equal basis, paying a percentage of the healthcare, but we all pay 5% of the employees, and the county would pay 95%. So that was the overriding goals, to find a way to bring, give employees raises and stabilize the healthcare. As we started budgetary process this year, as we sent the letters out, we received over $87 million worth of requests. We ended up with a proposed budget of $72 million, which approximately $70 million is operating cost, and about $2 million of capital improvements. Capital improvements range anywhere from replacing dumpster boxes that are 25 years old and are wore out, to a new accounting system for the county, doing refurbishing a pool, and some other items that we have. One of the bigger items that's in this year's budget that happens every five years is the reassessment. This year, there's a quarter million dollars budget in reassessment, which is not a, which happens basically every four to five years when reassessment comes along as mandated by law. One of the other overriding things that the board wanted to do was look at the school system and maintain that character of allowing them to provide raises and do some other things within their budget, including bringing school employees up on healthcare to equal to county employees. That takes some money. While obviously, in this budget, Dr. Brandon's here, we, in the proposed budget, we didn't fulfill all the requests that were made, but what we have been doing, and I'll go through these in just a second to show the slides, of how we've appropriated or portioned the money as we feel it's necessary to maintain a tax rate and services to the citizens and kids. The, if you'll look on the screen, the first slide that you have is a slide that shows from 2013 till the proposed budget, a percentage of budget for each part of the county government, and it excludes the capital improvements. As you can see by the chart at the bottom, that the school system historically is our largest portion of our budget, and this year's budget, there's 67.2% of the total county budget. The other portions that are fairly significant are DSS and public safety. The other portions are somewhere, anywhere from 3.5% down to less than 1%. So according to the percentage of each local budget, I think we've got our priorities in order, prioritize making the school system, funding it to the highest level we can. What we didn't do in the school budget this year was, there was a request to continue school construction. We've asked that the school system have some further discussions with us on those issues. I'm sure Dr. Brandon will address those in a moment. The next slide will show you, over the years, on the amount of local funds that we've provided to the school system. As you can see, that is a stair step up, and including debt service, that we're approaching $16 million of local dollars that's funding the school system. The issue with that is school systems and county government are essentially employee-driven. We don't have a lot of, except for capital improvements periodically. The only thing we offer is people, teachers, bus drivers, and law enforcement officers. That's the service we provide. And we have most of our money tied up into those services and the people. If you're going to provide great service and do a great job in the school system, you have to be competitive with those salaries for all levels, not just teachers, administrators, but department heads, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers. We hope, while we didn't have not proposed or agreed to provide full school funding that was initially requested, we have shown a significant increase between debt service and additional money for operating costs of over $800,000 to the school system. The next slide will, hopefully, will show how With County has done compared to what the state requirements of funding that we provide. I went to a meeting last week with administrators, and everybody was, in southwest Virginia, administrators or county administrators were talking about they were funding schools at 110% of state required or 115. And they asked me how much we were funding, and I said, "I can't answer that in front of all you guys because we're at 160 or 170% of what everybody else is paying," which is a good thing. That's our priority. But as you'll see, the blue is what we're actually providing each, have been providing each year, and the red is the required local match. So you can see that you're stepping way above what's required by the state and SOL requirements. The next slide is a comparison of where we've been with funding. If you take all the real estate taxes that are collected in With County, and personal property taxes, and go across this chart, you'll see that we've exceeded, over the last six or so years, 100%, we've been taking, under real estate and personal property, every penny of that, and then taking additional dollars and providing it to the school system. And as part of this year's budget process, you know, we've proposed a 5% tax increase, but even at 5%, we're still at 104% of total taxes collected, provided to the school. The next slide is a pie chart that talks about where, in our budget, where is money actually coming from on the revenue side? As you can see, the red is local revenues, the green is state revenues, and the blue is federal. And we've been pretty consistent, around 46% of the total money that we've been spending is local. As you can see, the federal goes up a little bit, goes down a little bit this year. We've seen some decline in those federal dollars. And the state, with their And the state with their annual is heading downward on their revenue back to school systems and state-supported entities. The next chart is going to give you a comparison. The total red is shorter than the blue blocks. The blue blocks are bars, are what we've been spending on an annual basis. The red blocks are what we've been taking in. As you can see, each year over the past and including this year, that we're taking reserves, the balance, the budget. And those are significant as you go forth in the future and maintain the requirements to finance projects at a low interest rate, et cetera. Everybody in the room knows that we've adopted, or the board has adopted, a $28 million requirement in the general fund to maintain, to meet our bond obligations, to have the highest rating that we can have. The next few slides are breakdowns of different departments of county government. General Government Administration is county administrator, treasurer, commissioner, those type of offices, and you can see we've had a fairly flat growth there of very few dollars, about 1 point, a little bit above 1.5. The next one is judicial administration, fairly consistent with the public administration. Public safety, if you'll notice in the next one, has actually gone down a little bit. We've completed the new consolidated dispatch center, so some of those costs have lowered that down to just only operating instead of capital. The next chart is public works, and you can see that has been going downward for the last few years. We've completed a lot of projects and done a lot of things that tends to lower those costs. Health and welfare, sore surprised at this chart, it was low, then up, then back down. We've worked hard over the past year to control some of the cost in CSA and public health, so you can see that we're hitting in the right trend with those costs. Education, it goes back to the stair step effect of increased funding and expenditures each and every year. Education chart would be off the graph if we included capital improvements, because capital improvements will spike those numbers up dramatically over a period of time, so we've excluded capital improvements from their graph. These are true operating costs through the school system. Parks, recreation, and cultural, you can see we've moved up, we've done, added some new programs such over at Sheffy School and some other things, doing after-school programs, which is a positive thing for kids, and implemented some, I guess, health screenings over in the eastern end of the county. Community development has been up and down a little bit, but pretty consistent around a million dollars or so, and if you add all those numbers up, it comes up to, we have a $70 million, 70.8 million operating budget, and about a $2 million capital improvement budget this year. And to make that happen on the revenue side, what's been proposed and for the public hearing tonight is a 5 cent increase in real estate tax. And within the budget, the public hearings for these will be later, May the 26th, and then also in June, an increase or proposed waste disposable, waste disposal permit that would be instituted here in the county. Mr. Chairman, that's the synopsis of the budget as we put it together this year. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Dalton, Dr. Brandon.
Thank you for allowing me this time to come before you tonight and just to discuss the budget. The last time I came before you and we were talking about preliminary budgets, I listened. I listened to what you had to say, I listened to your issues, I listened to what the concerns were with you all, with revenue and looking at possible increases, and I think that relationship has been extended over the last six years. I think we listen to each other. I came to you with a proposal of needs and wants at that time. The school system always has wants and things they're wanting to advance, whether it's through technology or through additional classrooms, additional classes, or things of that nature. But after listening to you all and discussing things and going through our first budget proposal of almost a million dollars or just a tad over that, we've gone back and come back to you with a budget that's just barely short of what's in the advertised budget. So we'll get to that in just a minute, but I want you all to know that we want to cooperate with this division as well. As Mr. Dalton pointed out, this group has been very supportive of public schools. I think public schools have a lot to offer. I think they are doing well with our children in With County. You can see positive examples of that all throughout the county. So I think your investments have been well spent, and I think we've been judicious in the way we spend money and making improvements and also providing a great instructional program. So by working together, I think we can go through that. And just to give you a little hint, I did a little math on the side, and we're at 67.2%. We only, I'm only going to ask for 67.9%, okay, which would be 1/10th of a percent less of the percentage of the budget than you funded last year. So keep that in mind too, because when you look at those types of things, that's what we're really going through for at this process. Our revenue, as far as adjusting the revenue, state revenues, you can see at the top, is an actual figure, sales tax is a projected figure, but we usually count on it when we're doing our budgets. Other funds, we are down, as you know, Bland County will not be participating in per-students at the Career and Technical Center next year. I've tried everything but try to be assistant superintendent in Bland to get that to happen, but since they moved the consolidation to Rocky Gap, the superintendent there feels like it's a closer commute to Tazewell County for those services. Our enrollment still look good in the career and technical classes, so there's really not an issue there, but it does cost us some funding in the other fund area. I was able to reduce the federal funds. I received at least notification up to this point that we will be receiving our forestry money. I won't go through the big long name of the act that goes through that, but the indications are now, I put those federal funds back in there, which initially I told you that we would have to take out. On the expenditure side, went exactly what Mr. Dalton, I'm just going to echo what he said. When we heard what your goals were, I basically took the wants out and looked at the needs, and that was a salary increase for our employees and to make sure we had a quality health insurance program, but hopefully at less cost for the individuals. As you can see, the health insurance, the amount of money that it takes to provide the increase of the new health insurance plan that the insurance committee recommended, and I think both boards have already adopted, you know, for the employees, which is at even or less cost for the employers, for the employees, excuse me. Also, the state, of course, has provided money that they say is for a 1.5% raise. Tonight, I want to tell you the actual truth. When you call Richmond and I ask them to put them on the spot of what that was, it was actually a .8769% of a 1.5% raise, because they based it on August 15th, and I basically had to go to the finance director of the state and say, "What number did you plug into the formula when you presented it to the general assembly?" And then I got a direct answer, you know, of what they actually did. So we had to also come up with funds to help balance that part of it. So the funding from the state only covered .8769% if you're going to give a raise for the entire time period for 1.5%. That was the mandated amount. Followed suit with that in the SOQ-funded positions, but we felt like that we were trying to stay in tune. We've worked together throughout the years to provide a 2% raise, you know, overall for employees. After doing that, in this budget now is a 2% raise for all support staff, every employee, every, there's an average of 2% within the teacher scale, and then for our administrators, I only included a 1.5% raise, because I just felt like that was what was mandated, that takes additional money to do that. So again, that was the way I cut our budget, by the administration only receiving 1.5%. All other employees receiving 2% within that range, and the teacher salary scale would be an average of 2% throughout the scale. VRS rate reduction, I just wanted to show that, we did have a small increase in that and a decrease, excuse me, in that, which brings our expenditures to that point. I then went in and said, "Okay, we have to cut more," because in preliminary conversations, you know, I knew it was between 300 and 400,000, what we needed to ask for, what you all were willing to put in the advertised budget, and reduced our local needs to provide the 1.5% raise for some levels of administrators, all administrators, 2% raise for others, the health insurance increase, and we needed 396,175 total. Now, that took a lot of cutting from everything we introduced to you. Of course, one of the obvious things, we took out the accounting program, that was an expense that was in the budget, took out A&E fees, you know, that we had projected to you all for phase two, and my request that we need to provide these raises and to provide health insurance coverage for our employees, we're the largest employer, you know, in With County. We have a lot of people. It's not like trying to provide insurance for 20 people, 10 people, or five people. You know, it's 538 people. And so when our numbers come forward of a raise or a health insurance slight increase, the numbers are a little bit bigger in some regard. So my request to you tonight, and on the slide two, you will see that in the advertised school board budget, additional operating funds for next year FY '16 are $318,000, which leaves me $78,175 short as far as providing these things, these two goals that you all have and the two goals that we have within the school board and the school organization. So my request tonight is simple in that regard, that I would like to ask that our budget be increased by that amount of money so that we can provide the necessary goals and meet the goals that you all have and that the school board has for its employees. You look around in our counties, there's lots of counties not in the same shape, and I'm very grateful. There are people laying off teachers, they're laying off support staff, they're laying off personnel left and right, because their budgets will not withstand it. We have not laid off one person with your all support and our budgeting, you know, by really taking care of the people in the six, last six years, and we've gone through some tough times, but you all have always stepped up to help in that regard. I feel like we've done our part, you know, in cutting back in our end so that we didn't have to have a large request during any certain time. The second part, just briefly, I want to talk about is the Phase Two Capital Improvement Plan. We have generated a large amount of momentum. I know you heard me say this during the budget presentation, but if you were at Royal Retreat Middle School or Sheffy Elementary when we did those dedications, you cannot tell me that you could not look in the eyes of the kids, look in the eyes of the people who were there, and understand what a difference it meant to them to get out of a 30, 35, 40-year-old building and renovate it and provide adequate instructional space both for the teachers and the kids. You all were there, most of you were there that day. You saw the difference it makes. You see the difference in the community, you live it each and every day, and now it's time we turn to our next phase. And the momentum is there, and we need to keep it going. If you remember, in the architect and engineer fees for the Phase One, you know, I really cut back and tried to make sure we had those fees to get the thing going, and then really all I needed was a commitment from this group that we would look at that debt service 12 months from then to carry on with the next phase. This is ultra-important for us to continue doing this. Looking at Phase Two, we had projected in the budget $197,000, there was no funding put forth, and I'm not here asking you for it. I'm only asking you in our budget to come up with the operating funds that we need to meet those two goals. But throughout the year, as you know, you all approved $94,000 carryover for us last year, to carry over from last year's budget, and out of a $45 million budget, that's about like you carrying forward $50 out of your budget every month. So $94,000 out of a $45 million budget is pretty remarkable. So I do not just spend that money when it's carried over, we use it for end-of-year needs. So that's one of the things that I would propose, we would have that carryover money for next year and be able to use whatever amounts that we can carry over toward the next phase of construction and keep this momentum going. I'm telling you, if we let it lack for a year, let it lapse, then it just stalls down and then you have to go again, and there's four or five buildings that still need that improvement in this county, and we've identified two or three of them in the next phases. Also, we've had fuel savings throughout the year, we've had some mid-year retirements, and I've watched that money very closely, because to be honest with you, I thought it might come to this. I'll just be perfectly honest. And I want us to do our part, just like I talked about in the previous meeting. I want the school board to be judicious in their budgeting and not just throw money out there to be purchasing something. So I thought this could be a possibility, if we could come forth and help out with the design process, that we could get a commitment in another 12 months, which would be in your budget next year for the debt service, not this coming year. So please, I don't want you to think that I'm asking for the 75 plus an additional 200 for fees, I'm not doing that. I'm just saying that if we have monies carried over in a specific amount, I can't give you an exact amount, but whatever we have carry over to come back to you and say, "Okay, we take that money, designate it specifically for that if we can keep the construction Phase Two going." I understand that you all have limits, you know, and if Phase Two cannot include two major renovations like we proposed, then we could look at some smaller projects along with one major renovation and keep it within the dollar frame of whatever your bond rating and your debt service limits will allow, and I'm willing to do that and organize that. Some opportunities could be, Spiller Elementary, I think, is the number one priority, just because of the way it looks, the setup in there, the system, the infrastructure, the heating, the HVAC, everything in there is out of sync and needs to be corrected. It's your largest elementary school in the county. Speedable bathrooms, that could be a smaller project to go in there and renovate those bathrooms and take care of it within this phase of the construction project. I know we've talked about it before, and we want to get that done, but when we did a bid alternate on that, the last time, it came in well over $125,000, you know, to do that. So we feel like now we might be able with another bid process and redesign of what we actually need to do in there, we could get that at a lesser cost. So you could combine Fort Chiswell Middle School, additional bathrooms, they have one set of bathrooms in that school, you all know that, you've seen it, you walked through it. So maybe we could reduce our scope to this one school, major renovation, take care of a couple of small projects with it if the money allows, and see what the needs are, and then go on with the next phases in the future. I think as a part of this, that Mr. Dalton and I discussed, we set up a group, a committee from this board and our board. We talk about Phase Two plans, what we'd like to have in them. We talk about your bond rating, we talk about what the actual needs are of the division, immediate needs within this next phase. We do a detailed cost estimate, and when I say detailed, we know pretty much what the needs are and what it's going to cost as we go through this process, and then get a commitment for debt service in FY '17 as we go through this. Just to give you one other thing, Sheffy Elementary Fitness Edition, that was brought up the last time I was here, to let you know that it's funding, we're building that with grant funding. That's the school system having the initiative to go out and say, "We want to even add more to that area," you know, recreation, fitness for those people in that area. Grant funding was received, construction is scheduled, they've started, the footers are poured, they've laid up the first few courses of block, if you haven't been by there, drive around back, it's an addition to that. And then we're also going to seek grant funding to supply inside. And this is the picture, I think that Mr. Dalton ran copies of the last time, I want to make sure you saw again, the design of it, how it fits onto the new gymnasium and the fitness area that we'll have at Sheffy. This is what Spiller looks like now. Take a picture, walk by there, drive by there, whatever you need to do, that's what it looks like in the landscape. We've thought about it a lot, you know, we just hadn't sit around, we looked at different designs, showed you additional classrooms. It's time to finish Spiller. It's been halfway done for a long period of time. It's time to finish and complete it, and this is what you could have. That's maximizing the land out front, which nobody uses. We don't take up any playground space whatsoever. It provides an identity to the school, two-story construction, talked about all these things, very economical, has an entrance to the building that's identifiable, safe, secure entrance on the front end, it's spaced, there's nothing there now but three trees, four trees, and shrubs. We don't take any of the playground, we don't have to take any of the parking lot, it just takes thought and work process, and that's what it could look like. This is a render of what you could do. It's time for us to finish Spiller. I'd like for Mr. Dalton and I to get together and, you know, try to set up a committee and work towards this as we go through next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brandon. Okay, we'll now go into citizens' comments.
Okay, just a reminder, three minutes, and I'll keep the time here to speak, five minutes if you're representing an organization. if you're representing an organization. Our first citizen that has signed up to speak is Carolyn King.
Okay, what I want to talk about is the budget for my office for this year. And I've had several things cut. The postal service was cut from 2,500 to 15. The travel convention and education was cut from $1,000 to 750. And then the repair, the office supplies was 2,000 to 1,000. And this year, we are having a large election, so we don't know exactly what we're going to have to have, but we feel we're going to need more ballots, there'll be more mailings, and also, if I need more money, is it going to be there? But also, for our workshops, we have one coming up in July, and it is mandatory, and the cost of it would be somewhere around 1,100. And then we also have an annual meeting in August, and the cost for it, the total for the two together, for both of them, would be 1,600. I had $1,000 in my budget last year, and I asked for 700. But instead of getting any increase, I got a decrease. And there are several things coming up with this Department of Elections, they're going to have a new SOR, which is Statements of Results, that will be tallying what you get, your vote you get at the elections. And then we're going to, right now, they're going to do away with the voter card, and we'll be sending out letters. And a lot of this is going to be going on discussion in these here two workshops. So, I feel like we need to go, I know that the money is tight, but if you could reconsider anything on the budget, it would be greatly appreciated. And I'd also like to thank you for giving Mary Ellen a raise. So, if there's anything you can reconsider and work out, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Next citizen is Sis Castle.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Dalton, I am speaking on behalf of the Electoral Board. I have the other two members with me tonight, G.W. Katrin and Robert Kegley. And we would like to, first of all, thank you for the vote that you gave to us to purchase the new machines, voting machines. And we understand that they can be in operation for the November election and that the poll workers will be trained and ready to go. We appreciate also that you were able to give an increase in our poll workers, that's what is proposed. Those workers come in about 5:00 or 5:30 on Election Day, and they're there all day long without leaving the premises until 8:00 or 8:30 at night, and they do a great job for us. We did receive the budget figures, and we appreciate what you were able to recommend. We have only one item that we'd like to address tonight, and that item is line item number 43840, and that is purchase of services. That is the programming of the machines for each election and ballots. We requested $13,000, and you have recommended 8,000. Now, in information that you have, and I would like to leave with Mr. Dalton, every election that we conduct, it is running about $8,000 to program our machines and do the ballots. This year, as you all know, we're having a big election in November, which will take that $8,000, and that's what we have been allotted at the present. We are also 99% sure that we're going to have a primary election in the spring, because next year is the presidential election. So, we will need additional funding for that. The information that we used was collected from the last election time, when we did have two elections within one year, and that was in 2011, 2012. And at that time, we spent $12,995 on those two elections. So, that is the reason we asked for the 13,000. And we just feel like there is no way that we can conduct two elections with $8,000 when it normally takes that for one. I have the documentation here that I'll leave with Mr. Dalton, and it comes from the With County Budget Worksheet. And also, I think that's about it, but I think that, you know, we just want you to be aware that I think there is going to be a shortcoming there on that figure, and that the reason we did ask for the additional amount was that we're just very sure that there will be two elections we'll be conducting this year. And thank you for your consideration. Good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Castle. Okay, next speaker signed up is Jack Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I am the mayor by default of Mount Airy, Virginia, does that give me any extra time? I can't even talk to you about our budget situation, it's very much a concern and bothered me primarily because of where we are. Let me tell you a bit about it. I used to remember these speeches, but now I have to write them out. Poor people and a majority of citizens are the big losers in Appalachian economics and in With County economics. Appalachia, like much of rural America, has become a welfare basket case. The working poor face three interrelated problems: falling in low wage scales, family breakdowns, and inflation. The area took a severe job hit in 2012, 2013. The poor lost many survival skills that once had to the acceptance and had to go to the acceptance of a welfare check, and are struggling for their survival in a broken economy. There are few real private sector jobs outside low-end services such as Walmart, fast food, and so many employers. Example, the 4,500 or so employed by Virginia Tech earn big money, while these same low-income employees fight thousands of students for housing at inflated prices relative to their income. Kibbinger's Best Cities Survey is an index that was developed to compare the median family income versus the cost of living. This is a reflection of both income gap and low quality of jobs. This region of southwest Virginia suffers the highest cost of living relative to the lowest median family income as compared to other communities in Virginia. Now, why is that? We share the same problem with most low-wage private sector jobs. Too many government or government-related jobs for a selected few. For example, we just heard from Dr. Brandon Knight that the school is the largest employer. And their wages compared to these people that's working at McDonald's or what have you, there's a big, big difference there. And also, another thing that's contributing to it is we have an affluent or comfortable retirees, which are inflating costs. And we have the presence of too many colleges and schools that provide no real opportunity for the average resident, and they pay not a penny in property taxes or other taxes. An example of where I'm standing right now, now, how much value does it add to the tax coffers? Well, it doesn't add any, does it? Maybe it's a necessary building, and it probably is, but it doesn't add anything to the income. Building new school buildings for a decreasing population is not the problem. The problem is our educational system that has to filter through several layers of federal, state, and local government management, and we've forgotten what our real purpose is by giving way to being politically correct in ratios rather than true education. So, yes, maybe there are, and in fact, probably are, some who have not had a raise in some time, meaning in fact, most in the private sector face the same, the same situation. Virginia is the third highest state shortfall in revenue of 50 states, $2.4 billion. Now, how much longer do you think that Virginia and other counties like With will wait until they further increase taxes on their citizens? Virginia is broke, as are 22 other states. Think about this, if a state or even a county is grappling with a budget deficit now, with the economic deflating expansion approaching its sixth anniversary, what will its condition be in the next slowdown of stripes? That striking condition is only some months away. So, you guys took an oath when you came into office that you're going to listen to the people, and we are the people, and we're petitioning you to do not have any increase in taxes, be prudent and sensible, and we ask that you tighten your belts and live within your means as we're asking others to do it. We can no longer support dispending habits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Okay, our next speaker is Jerry Hurt.
Thank you, Chairman Reed, and the board. My name is Jerry Hurt, I'm from rural retreat, been retired, just came back here after 50 years, so glad to be back in With County. It was a little shocking when I seen the budget and the amount of increase. So, I don't have any specific comments on any item, I'd just like to share with you some thoughts I have, that I ran a company myself for 30 years, very successfully, and we faced the same issues you faced. To keep good employees, retain them, you had to pay them more, you had to give them increases, you had to pay medical care as they come through. But as a businessman, you know, fortunately, you didn't have the option to go into your customer and say, I've done the best I can, I've got all these cost increases, I've managed them, I can't do anything, so customer, you need to give me an 11% increase in my prices. It doesn't apply. So, I have to manage my, I have to go back, I have to find a way, I start from the top and I go to the bottom. And I understand, all these things you have are good things. I mean, I assume you've gotten rid of all the waste, you've gotten rid of all the things that you just would like to have. But the bottom line is, it seems to me, you can't afford them. You need to find a way, the good things that are in this budget, though, you just can't afford. I mean, I even respect Dr. Brandon, you know, here is a $45 million budget, and we know medical costs up, we know wages are up, those are good to keep the teachers, but they've come up with a $100,000 reduction. That's .2% of one, but yet we're asking to put the burden on the taxpayers of this county, 11% increase. When we're facing, we take all the things that we can do, we can't control, and we understand that, but the things that we have to look at, we come up with a .2% of 1% of cost improvements? And I think the people of the county the same way. If you're a citizen and your kid has to have braces, or you have a major car repair, you have to find some way to be able to reflect that and get your costs in. You can't go to your employer and say, hey, I've managed my costs the best I can, but I need 11% wage increase to be able to balance. So, again, I don't have any specifics on items, I would just respectfully ask you, as you go through this final process, just to review in detail and find good things that are in the budget, but the reality is, we can't afford them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt.
Brian Burkett is our next speaker.
Evening, guys. First off, Curtis Pennington was unable to be here tonight, he had an emergency death in the family, so a little unprepared here, so bear with me. I generally don't handle all the politics that goes on, but I'm going to do the best I can tonight, so. First off, does everybody have a copy of the budget, proposed budget for the airport? Special Projects Budget, this is a one-time deal, one-time shot, and that includes the runway resurfacing. Y'all remember going out with me on the, that's come up 2016, I just want to express the importance on that, it's not getting any better, so we're going to really have to bear down on that one real soon, along with the navigation easement. And that one's 5,000, the runway resurfacing, we're looking at 28,000 for local funds, and With County's part of that's 11,000. And that would be on top of the 60,222, 67. And I think Curtis, he had told me that, you know, come back with another figure that was lower than the proposed 60,222. I don't have that figure with me, but I just want to express my importance of, that we definitely have to have that to be able to operate. I will say that we have lowered, there's been a decrease in the budget from last year. I did a lot of cutting of some unnecessary things around the airport there and saved quite a bit. And maintenance and facilities, that was a big decrease, down $9,000, so. Does anybody have any questions on the Special Projects Budget? I can answer that if anybody has any questions on that.
Yes, Ms. Crocker. You can come up, Ms. Crocker. Is that microphone?
I don't need it, I don't think. Do appreciate your dilemma, and I hope you explain what I was trying to explain better than I did the other day. We, at the meeting we met with the four governing entities, we talked about level funding, and I think that was our expectation, but I would like to say this, and I'm saying it in all niceness, but of the 64,776 that was budgeted for 2014, 15, With County has, still has not appropriated 47,361, 63 of it, and the other three entities have each paid their part. So, what that amounts to is you all are the only ones that haven't paid the portion from last, this past year and what we're in now, the year we're in now. And we really, I really believe that our airport is working very frugally and very efficiently, but we need to be able to pay our bills, same as you all. And we realize also that any cuts that you all make is the one-fourth of this entity means that the other three will follow suit as they budget, and so we will lose four times as much. And we really don't think we're requesting, we must have the operating funds, and we hope that the other funding will come because it's commitments we've made and you all have made. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crocker.
And I believe that's all I've got, too. Y'all did have a jet come in today with some real estate company on it, they're looking to build another facility in With County that could bring probably 200-plus jobs. That'll help you out a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next speaker is Linda Meyer.
Good evening, gentlemen, I came, of course, with the budget, and I did a lot of redlining. Let's start with civic organizations. There's a new one here, Southwest Virginia Alliance for Manufacturing. You've appropriated 21,850 for that. If you went back into the budget request, you'll also see that these people spent over $15,000 on their Christmas party and the luncheons. So, in lieu of that, I don't think they deserve our support, because it's not giving anybody a job. It's wasted money, they could have peanut butter for lunch. I don't want to be funding that. Also, the Southwest Virginia Heritage Foundation is another 10 grand. After I went through this, I found several hundred thousand dollars that really could be dispensed with, with no problem, and nobody would absolutely die. This alliance looks like an NGO that is a big pyramid scheme, whose the director is getting over $50,000 a year, and who is he really benefiting? We have all kinds of technical support and so on through partnerships and all over in southwest Virginia. I don't think this NGO is relevant for us. Okay, here's an issue, it's called hybrid liability, disability insurance. On page six, what is hybrid disability insurance? That seems to pop up all through the budget as an additional cost. It's minimal, but it's still an additional cost. I don't know what hybrid disability insurance, okay, but hybrid disability insurance, that's kind of interesting. Also, on page 10, in the legal portion, $104,600. Did we hire the attorney, or aren't we subcontracting this? Or are we subcontracting this for that amount of money? I attend more meetings than the county attorney does, and so it seems like it's costing us a whole lot of money. It would be nice if he showed up. There are also, let's see, the tourism, here is $80,000 for signage. Is this money from tour, the 80,000 or $80,000, is that coming from the hotel taxes? Or where's that coming from? Because do we really need $80,000 worth of signage? I don't think so. And then if we talk, if you go down the budget, hate to rag on this poor gentleman, but the dog control, we spent $9,000 for heat for the dog kennel. I used to live in the northwest, I had dogs, I had a I had a kennel. I never spent nine grand a year on heat for a dog kennel. That seems a little bit outrageous. So, I think you guys could go back and look through the budget and do a whole lot of redlining and save us many hundreds, thousands of dollars. We do not have it. There are people here that don't have jobs, have lost jobs, the coal industry and so on. We can't afford to be doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Oh, another comment. I was at a school board meeting a couple of months ago with Mr. Brennan, and he told us about an in-house survey that they had done, at which time he said that the employees were really satisfied with the working conditions, and they were also satisfied with the raises. So, why are we giving raises to people that are satisfied with them? And we're having major medical, 8% healthcare increases. That should be considered the raise.
Dr. Brennan, did you sign this? Did you sign this? Oh, okay. Well, I just want to make sure that was your hand. You've had your time, I guess. John Benham is our next speaker.
John, it's with the Airport Commission.
Oh, okay. The next is an organization, the Roar Treat Fair Association.
My name's Jordan Hall. I'm the president of the Roar Treat With County Fair Association. Ron is passing out a budget and a list of events that we have out here. Now, we requested money, and we did not see it in the budget, so we are here to express our concerns, I guess you could say. As you can see, if we didn't have any event at the fair, just let it sit in there, the cost a year is $10,100. That's insurance, utilities, and the maintenance, you know, mowing and all that. That's if we didn't have one event. That doesn't include concessions. That doesn't include advertising. That doesn't include your entertainment or anything like that. So, it's very hard to run an association like that and not have any funding from a county that has its name on the fair but doesn't give us any money to help us out. We're not just a fair. We just don't have one fair week. As you can see the list of events, we have a circus this Friday night. They come in. We have... The Saddle Club has all kinds of events out there. We have ATV rodeos, which is a new and big thing. We usually have pretty good crowds for that. We're having a feelers convention the Fourth of July weekend. We have all these events planned, but we're finding it hard to spread the word because we don't have any funding for advertising and to pay the bills. I mean, as you can see, it's $10,100 just to keep the place running. And right now, we're struggling, and everybody sees the Roar Treat With County Fair, but in our eyes right now, it should be the Roar Treat Fair. We don't have... We've had board members pay out-of-pocket for some bills that the Fair Association just doesn't have, and that's not fair to the directors. And, you know, there's been a lot of people resign lately. We have a new wave of people, younger people, that want to see the fair do really well, and we don't want it... It would be a shame to just have to lock the gates and just, you know, use the remainder of our lease just to let it sit there, because that's where it's coming to, and there's a lot of... I mean, like, the Saddle Club uses the arena, the Tractor Club uses the tractor pull area. So, we're really working our butts off, and we don't think it's fair that, per se, Chitagua gets $10,000 for a seven-day event when we have 25 events listed here and we don't get a dime. So, you know, we really do... Would like you to consider helping us out a little bit because it's not looking good right now, so thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker that signed up is Ron Khan.
Take a watch on this one.
Yeah, yeah, take a watch real careful now. I'm speaking in favor of... In regards to the Fair Association also, and I'm a director of the... Or board member, whatever they call them. And it's the first time I have been in an organization that is as aggressive and as hardworking as this bunch is, and they need your support. Here, I'll pass out a few things. If you can just pass that thing over. That is some of the advertising that's happening and some of the work that they are doing to make this thing work. In addition, they're selling ads, four-foot by eight-foot panels all over the fences there in order to generate some operating funds, and they need your help. When this new group took over this organization... This new group took over this organization, it basically was beyond broke. They owed stuff from the previous organization. And I can't think of a better place for you to support in a time that is absolutely a dire need. This is not a want, that they need to be supported at least to the $10,000. And 15 would be something that would give them a little bit of courage to go on. But the way it is right now... He mentioned Chitagua's getting 10 grand. Well, I understand you folks say Chitagua's only getting 5 grand. The rest of it is a matching grant. That's wrong. Take a look at your own budget. You spent, from the county, $10,000 last year on Chitagua. That was the amount that was actually issued. I've gone through this stuff. And so, cut it down to the 5,000 that it's supposed to be and kick that 5,000 in with another 10 and help these folks who operate all year long and work hard. And we'll bring this thing up to a continuing good operating system, and I think it'll be a big, big benefit for everybody, and I hope, you know, that you will take this seriously and bring it on. Thank you so much. I appreciate being able to be here.
Thank you, Ron. That's all the citizens we have signed up.
We have an executive director of library and a local manager.
Yes. I was the last. I've seen some people come in.
You noticed, belatedly, that the statistics I've got here are for you guys, but it's comparable, about the same, I think. I'm Tom Hakers, Director of With Grayson Regional Library. The amount that you want to look at mainly is the last amount on the left on the right-hand side, $326,542. Now, what that is, is on the other sheet, I've come up with what seems to me to be a equitable pay scale for the libraries. Everybody, basically, in every library, there's certain functions that have to be done. They're pretty much across the board. Everybody's pretty much the same. So, I figured start with the base pay and add 3% per year, and that's what you end up with is that figure right there. Yours would be very similar to that for With County. $326 is a lot of money, so it's possible that if you think of another way of doing this, that'd be fine, too, but right now, the people that you have working at the libraries are paid pretty low wages. People entering the job market at Walmart and McDonald's are making more than they are. So, I'm just thinking that somehow you need to raise the salaries of the staff working there. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Before I close, citizens' comment. I've seen some more people come in after the sign-in sheets come up to me. Does anyone else would like to speak concerning the budget?
I'm Denise Davis, and in one of your past meetings, you signed a resolution to put kids first, and I'd just like to say that by initiating this tax increase, you are putting kids first, because every year, the teachers are asked to do more and more, but they're provided less compensation. And I just want to commend you for the courage to do this, and I am now retired. I retired last year, so my income is not what it once was, but I would gladly pay the increase in the taxes to see education expenses or budget increased. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak?
Tim, I'd like to thank everybody for National Day of Prayer. This is the only county I know of that has 47,000 communities, and we have two National Day of Prayers in one county. Successful.
And I have to say, I attended the one retreat.
I attended the one here.
And it was really, it was really nice. Got a little sunburn, but it was really nice.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Please give your name.
I'm Chris Brown. I'm a local business owner, and I'm not really prepared to say anything. I just kind of wanted to hear, you know, what was going on with regards to this. I feel compelled, after just glancing through some things just today, to encourage you to possibly take a look at medical insurance, take a closer look at medical insurance. As a business owner, we were devastated in the last couple of years by the rising cost of medical insurance, and I'm sure you experienced the same thing. Our bill this year initially was proposing an 80% increase in our premium. Now, right now, myself and my employees have a HSA program. Family experiences a $6,000 deductible before an 80/20 copay kicks in. An individual will experience a $3,000 deductible. And just looking at what I could from what was on your website, the medical plan looked great to me. I would like to have it. Looked like, you know, you're affording most of the premiums for your employees in all likelihood, from what I could see, and the out-of-pocket expenses are minimal. So, it's a great plan, but I'm not sure, at least from my experience, I'm not sure that it's realistic going forward. So, it looked to me, if I ran through the numbers in my head, I didn't see a budget total for the... I think it was $42,300 was the line item in the budget. Looked like $700,000 or $800,000 worth of expenditures go out there. So, to me, that looks like having just spent so much time in my management last year trying to figure out what to do with this, my employees ended up taking on a larger and larger expense of the insurance. And just don't forget, I guess one thing that drew me up here was to say, when you're talking about salaries and things like that, if you've got great insurance and low-cost copays and low percentage participation in the premiums, that's huge. It's huge. So, don't forget that, and it's also an opportunity for some further scrutiny in the budget. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Here and now, I'll close the public hearing. We'll be considering all the comments, and we'll move on with the budget from there. Okay, we'll move back into our agenda. Old business, Mr. Dalton, anything under old business? New business, the wall of Honor Memorial Day Ceremony? I don't have it pulled up. If you... Mr. Dalton, give the dates.
It's Sunday, May 24th at 1:30.
Okay.
In Withers Park.
Mr. Dalton, anything else under new business?
Closed meeting.
We need to have a motion to go into closed meeting. Discussion of industry.
I'll make a motion that we move into a closed meeting to discuss, as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A5, a matter that involves a prospective new business or industry.
I have a second.
Thank you.
Do a roll call vote, Dr. Hausen.
Aye.
Mr. Char, but we are now in closed session.
Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
I have a second on the resolution.
Aye.
Okay, here in a second, I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Hausen.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Char, but Mr. Dalton, does anything else to come before the board at this time?
I think the Grayson County and... What other county's road resolution? We can...
We can get a copy. That's all.
Okay. We can bring... We can look at it Thursday night, along with this other resolution about the elk.
I just, I mean, as far as the resolution that the other county's passed against the horse thing or whatever, I personally am not completely against all they're doing. I just think they need to make sure they get public input, and listen to public input.
I just want to see what they...
Yeah. But I mean, I think the way their resolution was wrote was basically they were against the whole thing, and I mean, I don't think this board should be against the whole thing because...
Yeah, and I'm not... I don't see what they...
Okay. Is anything else? We are in recess until 5 o'clock on Thursday, which is the 14th.